Call this meeting to order. Um, Jeremy, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. McMcKinnon.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. All right, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone has seen the minutes, or they're in front of you. We have minutes from the August 28th meeting and also our September 3rd special meeting. So if there are no addendums to the, to the minutes, or anyone has any questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move we accept the minutes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 28th and September 3rd meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, minutes have been approved. Now, we also need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Amen.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, agenda is approved. We have nothing on hearing of the public for agenda items, so we're going to skip that section. And we're going to jump right into the amazing, wonderful treasures report.
All right. So, so tonight, our financial forecast has been changed. So we used to call it five-year forecast. It's changed to a four-year-ish forecast. And so we're just going to call it the financial forecast from now. So this is the fall 2025 financial forecast. And so, to start this out, I had worked on this forecast and had found out that we have a lot of changes, just even in the last two days. So pretty much what I had created became outdated very quickly because they've moved the date up so early. And so we'll probably have to continue to bring five-year forecasts back to you. So I wanted to write something and be able to communicate this out to you and to the public, and so I'll get started, and then I'll take any questions you might have. So ladies and gentlemen, esteemed colleagues, parents, teachers, and community members, thank you for indulging me today. As most of you know, my name is Jeremy Hiddle, and I serve as the Chief Financial Officer for the Pickle City Schools. For the past 13 years, I've had the privilege of managing our district's finances, ensuring that every dollar supports our students' education and future success. Today, I stand before you not just as your CFO, but as a dedicated advocate for public education in Ohio, a system that's been under siege for far too long. I'm here to shed light on the ongoing crisis in school funding, the misguided policies that perpetuated, and why it's time for our leaders in Columbus to stop treating schools like political punching bags and start to address the root problems. Let's start with the history, because understanding where we came from is key to fixing where we're going. Ohio public schools have relied heavily on local property taxes since the 1820s, when the state first authorized districts to levy them for educational purposes. This decentralized approach made sense in a frontier era, but it has evolved into a flawed system where a district's wealth determines its students' opportunities. Wealthy suburbs thrive while rural and urban areas like ours figure out how to scrape by. By the mid-20th century, property taxes funded 60% to 70% of school costs, and that reliance only deepened with economic shifts. Enter the Nixon and Ford era in the 1970s, a time of rampant inflation and economic hardship. Home values soared, automatically inflating property tax bills without voter approval. So in response, Ohio lawmakers passed House Bill 920 in 1976, which freezes revenue from voter-approved levies at their initial amount, reducing tax rates as values rise to prevent unvoted increases. It was sold as a taxpayer protection, but here's the reality. House Bill 920 forces districts to go back to the ballot every few years just to maintain operations for our teachers, buses, books, and inevitably, all the inflation. Ohio now holds more school levy elections than any other state in the Union, turning educational funding into a perpetual campaign and a political nightmare. This efficiency, it is a doom loop that exhausts communities and politicizes our children's futures. This inequity reached a boiling point in the 1990s with the landmark Deroff versus State of Ohio case. In 1997, and three more times thereafter, the Ohio Supreme Court ruled the system unconstitutional, violating the state's mandate for a thorough and efficient system of common schools. The court highlighted how over-reliance on property taxes created vast disparities. Some districts had gleaming facilities and ample resources, while others dealt with buildings crumbling and outdated textbooks. They demanded a complete overhaul, meaning the Supreme Court of Ohio, with the state stepping up to ensure that equity regardless of the local wealth. Have we addressed this ruling? In name, yes, but in substance, far from it. Post-Deroff reforms increased state aid by billions and introduced formulas like the Fair School Funding Plan, which we're currently trying to implement, which has a base aid on student needs like poverty and special education, and hopefully phasing this in by 2027. The state's share of funding has risen to about 55%, which is a step forward. But property taxes in the state of Ohio still account for 45% to 50% of school budgets, and core disparities persist. We've seen tweaks, not transformation. And now, recent actions threaten to undo even those gains. Let's look at Pickle City Schools as a prime example of doing everything right in a broken system. We've operated in the black for 18 consecutive years without asking voters for new operating money in that same amount of time. Our local revenues are balanced, our property taxes and income taxes each contributing about 25%, creating mixed funding. We've been prudent stewards of taxpayer money, cutting where possible, and prioritizing students. And actually, during my tenure, we reduced taxes to our taxpayers. Yet, for my entire 13-year tenure, we've been waiting around to be made whole under successive state formulas, each promising equity but delivering delays. We've been at the cap for many years. You've heard me say it, right? Time and time again. Finally, by the end of this biennium, we might fully phase in to the Fair School Funding Plan, but now, that's at risk. Enter the latest assaults. House Bill 186, just reintroduced yesterday, which limits property tax increases on voter-approved levies could cost our district $1.1 million annually, a direct hit to student programs, staff, and resources. This isn't abstract, it's classrooms. Without aids, without updated technology, larger class sizes, then there's the piggybacking provision, piggyback provision in the state budget, allowing county commissioners and auditors to extend homestead exemptions for seniors and disabled homeowners and to regular homeowners, effectively doubling tax relief and reducing revenue flowing to schools. Now, I'm not opposed to helping our vulnerable residents. We've talked about that before. Who is? But this shifts the burden without addressing the underlying flaw, our over-dependence on property taxes. And it's not just this. There are at least 14 more legislative acts looming, from House Bill 335, proposed bans on revenue caps, to House Bill 96's inside millage elimination, Senate Bill 66, House Bill 129, and others that could slash billions statewide, not to mention the ballot initiative to completely remove property taxes in the state of Ohio completely. Add in overrides of the governor's vitos, which are still possible any day when we wake up, because those can happen all the way till December 31st of 2026. And in items like the 40% carryover cap, which forces revenues refunds if reserves exceed that threshold, and you have a recipe for disaster. These measures aren't so much about dismantling the Fair School Funding Plan outright, but they are destroying our local ability to collect property taxes that our communities have voted on and relied upon since the system was established in 1976. We are now shifting decision-making from the Board of Education to county commissioners, taking it out of the hands of our local communities and placing it with three people who may not even live in our school district, potentially doing harm to our schools without truly representing us. These voter-approved taxes are being undermined by provisions like piggybacking homestead exemptions, which empower commissioners to double tax relief options without offsetting the loss of revenue for schools, leading up to $1.7 billion in statewide cuts over three years. In essence, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, applying drastic Band-Aid fixes that erode local control and fiscal stability without solving the core issue of inequity and over-reliance on property taxes. Schools become the political hot potato, easy to kick around, because who wants to pay more taxes? But let's be clear, taxes fund essential societal functions, police, fire, roads, and yes, schools, that educate the next generation. We didn't create this mess. We didn't implement the 20 mil floor that guarantees minimum taxes regardless of the value, nor did we create the House Bill 920 caps, nor the intricacies of the inside millage. We've just tried to survive, survive within the rules that were set by the politicians in Columbus. It's been nearly 30 years since Deroff's decision, and the fight has raged on for at least 35 or more. Enough is enough. Our leaders must stop villainizing school districts, because that's their favorite thing to do these days. Blame it on the schools, it's not our fault. They're wanting more money, not us. But the rising cost of property taxes needs to end, blaming it on rising property taxes needs to end, and start fixing the system that created the problem in the first place. Increasing the state's share, for example, to 60% or more, untie funding from local wealth, and fully fund the school funding plan without delays or diversions. Invest in our students, not short-term tax gimmicks that starve education. To our lawmakers, hear us. To our community, join us in advocating for change. Our kids deserve better. Pickle City Schools has proven fiscal responsibility works, but we can't do it alone in a rigged system. Let's demand real reform for the sake of every child in Ohio. Please, call, email me, I will be happy to help anyone who is trying to reach out to their local representatives to address these issues, because there are still 14 more pieces of legislation waiting, and we're going to need everyone's help to get out the word that dismantling public education is not going to work for Miami County schools or the state of Ohio. I had to say it, it was weighing heavily on my mind, there's a lot going on, and we're under attack, and we have got to wake up, or it's going to be too late. So with that, I'm going to go into the five-year forecast, I'm going to go through it briefly. It's not going to be, I'm not going to get into details, because it's already changed. So we're going to do it for the sake of doing it, because I have to submit it to the High Department of Education, but I promise you, I'm going to leave you with something positive at the end of this.
This is twice, isn't it twice a year we're supposed to do the five-year forecast?
Yeah, we'll probably see at least four times for me now.
Okay.
Because it's, I'm not, we're going to keep changing.
Yeah, the next one will be a new one.
Just keep on changing. So, we're going to grind on through here. Good news, we have a positive cash balance projected at this point through June 30th of 2030. The overall long-term projections that we have in place hold, and we're on target, as we look at every month on our fiscal reports, that we're on target where we think we need to be at the end of the year. Things that we need to look at, state legislation and school funding, which we just talked about, and then again, that enrollment is going to be a key factor as we continue, because every student matters. Again, I'm going to skip through this, because we've hit a lot of it, but the, we're doing the four-year forecast now, the date has changed, it moves, where we will have to have this done by August 31st and February 28th moving forward. We're hoping to get this changed, because one of the reasons why these dates make no sense is if you're running a levy and it passes in November, now you don't have an updated five-year forecast until February. The way that it was, you could run a levy, pass it in November, and then you would have an updated forecast in November. So they've, changing these dates hasn't really made a lot of sense to anybody that does this for a living. We're going to keep using the five-year forecast, so you'll see that what you have is a five-year forecast. We're not changing our template, it's a management tool, the, you know, the state only wants four years, that's fine, but we're going to keep doing what we've been doing, we're not making any of those changes. The whole point today is to try to engage the board and the community in the long-range planning, that's why we put these five-year forecasts out. It's also used to serve as a basis to be able to issue a 412 certificate, which is saying that we can afford to enter into agreements with people, including as when we negotiate with our unions, that's why we have a five-year forecast in place, so that we're able to say that we're able to afford it. And then, again, for the state to be able to identify if there's potential financial problems. And I think that this is where this has become an issue, is that there are some people across the state who, for lack of a better word, may be not the most competent and had inaccurate five-year forecast, and then they found themselves into financial trouble. And so now, we're trying to, you know, pendulum has swung to now where the state wants to take more control over it. So, we're working through it, and I'll take those issues over the financial issues we're talking about. I've talked to you about the legislative concerns that we have, that was a little bit about that, but 25% of our revenue comes from property taxes. So just remember, if that initiative goes up on the ballot and passes, that we'll have to figure out how to fill a hole of 25% of our local share of revenue. As you can see here, this is still an ongoing process. I had showed you this in the past, that we had a budget timeline, and that's all through there. And now with the potential overrides of vitos, the budget season can basically run through the entire legislative session. So we're still waiting to see what happens there. The House voted in July to override the governor's veto, and the one was just levy types. And that was about fixed levies, and so you cannot run a fixed levy any longer. There's some legislation, again, brewing that maybe they'll bring that back, but for now, we can't run any more fixed levies. Legislature can act all the way to December 31st of 2026. Right now, there's, you know, again, I talk about those 14 bills, there's a group of three called the Taxpayer Freedom Trilogy Act, that if these bills pass would eliminate continuing levies, eliminate inside millage, and create more than 50% year margins for new levy approvals before you could run a new levy. What we've been asking when it comes to that regard is what we already have in place. We have a cash reserve policy in place, the board has voted on that a long time ago, that basically helps the board identify at what time would they need to go out and run a new tax levy. So, we're not in a position right now where that's the case, and if we had a 50% carryover in our bank account, I would doubt that anybody would be running a levy for that. So, it seems a redundant thing, so I don't know if somebody, again, did this and they're punishing people, but we have a policy, so we don't need additional legislation, like we already have it taken care of at Pickle, but I don't know. And obviously, any of these changes can be significant and turn this thing on its head. So here, the big breakdown to take from this is that our state funding is 50.6, and our local is 49.4. And again, we've, I've done this now for, this is going on my 14th year, now I've finished 13 years. And so this bounces back and forth between 1%, it's been 49 to 51, and so it continues to stay in that same realm. So you can see the breakdown of our real estate taxes, income taxes, and other local taxes. And then we talk about our expenses, and you'll see that about 75% of our wages and benefits, and that's where we would like it to be, we like it to be in that mid-to-upper 70s. And then the rest of it is based off of services and materials, and mainly our services are contracts with the ESCs that take care of our special ed needs. Go through those. Bottom line is that we're going to stay vigilant to make sure that the Fair School Funding formula gets implemented. We'll be watching the legislature, and then, we are financially stable at this point, and we're just hoping that we can remain that way. Again, here's my contact information, if anyone wants to reach out, I'd be happy to help. Are there any questions? Okay. Other things that we have to go through today are our appropriations for the year, so that's fun. So we're appropriating a total of $73,386,371.50, and that includes all of our funds, as well as our federal grants. As far as the general fund appropriations, that's at $49,372,778.20. I'm also asking for you to approve the monthly fiscal reports, as well as the financial forecast that you have with you. There's also the salary and step adjustments that are in there. So we did have $27,271 worth of tuition reimbursement, and we had a very large group of people moving columns this time. So we had 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 9, 10, 13 people moved a column. So that was a pretty big number for what we normally have. And then there's one to fund a fund transfer in here that we do twice a year, and that is to help pay for the renovations at Pickle High School from the permanent improvement levy to the debt service account. And then the last thing on here that we do annually is we approve the in-state and out-of-state tuition rates. The in-state is $7,457.86, and the out-of-state is $13,489. And in my 13 years here, we've never used this information for anything, but we do it annually anyways. Are there any questions? Now, I promised you something positive, so I'm going to have them pop it back up here. And this is one of the reasons why we do what we do, and I tolerate the craziness that I tolerate, is because I want to do what's right for kids, and you want to talk about something that's right for kids. These were taken this morning.
Wow.
This is the first time the lights that were turned on on this thing, and these things pop right out of the ground, it's amazing.
They used them last, in their tennis match.
They used them, yeah.
The last tennis match, they got to have the lights on.
So I am, I'm super proud of these, they are amazing.
Can you share that picture with us?
Yes, I can forward this out to you guys, but, very cool. So this is why we do what we do.
That's awesome.
It made me feel good to get these this morning, because I've been, you know, dealing with a lot of this garbage, and it's fun to be able to be like, kids are getting what they need, instead of, you know, the water coming up through broken tennis courts. That, that's not good, so, it's awesome.
It's a destination now.
It is, it's really cool. And these lights, you can see, like, it's still dark around it, these lights are very, they're very direct, they're LEDs, and they're turned in just a specific way that it doesn't light up and cause all kinds of light pollution, it only lights up the courts.
It doesn't take a long time to light up, it's immediate.
Yep. Yeah, all LED, yep. So that's cool.
That's awesome.
See? Something positive to go with.
That all worked out.
All of it, yes, it did. We were able to successfully have our cross-country night match, we were able to have our first home football game, and we were able to have multiple, although senior night got rained out for tennis, we were able to have multiple home matches this year for our seniors, and we didn't think we were going to have any. So, we made it happen. It might have been tough, but we made it happen.
But look at it, it was well worth it.
Yeah. So good. And that's just a little bit of what.
A little bit of what's to come, yes.
That's awesome. Well, thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions? And I want to make sure that people get to hear what you just said. We know, we need to share out the video.
Yeah, to go out on Indy Nation station.
Yeah, so that people can hear that speech, because I think it's important for everyone to hear it. So, thank you for your dedication, and thank you for your enthusiasm and your passion for the school system.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you'll win an award for that speech, too. I'm just kidding.
I'm not in it for the awards, as you well know, I know you're just joking.
I know.
It's, it's, it's just, we got to, we got to stop. This has become nonsense at this point. We're over just pettiness, now it's complete and utter nonsense.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions for Jeremy? All right, I will take a motion to approve the treasures agenda.
I make a motion we approve.
Do I have a second? I think I got a motion, JoJo, you good for a second?
I'm good for a second.
All right. All right, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mrs. McMcKinnon.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, Jeremy. Moving on to the super-tennis report.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, we had the state report card data came out, and we've already had a chance to meet with our district leadership team, administrators have poured through it, the curriculum department is working with our academic coaches, lots of really good things to celebrate, and Scott's going to share that here in a minute, but we're already really focused on targeting the areas that we need to continue our improvement on. So, Scott, would you mind sharing with them some of the things, and then we can answer any questions that you might have?
Absolutely. So overall, before we even start, I'm exceptionally proud of what our report card showed this year, and in the past years as well, but there's been concerted effort amongst our teachers, our families, our students, our academic coaches, to be very, very intentional and very explicit in instruction, meaning we are going right after kids, helping them learn what they need to learn to be successful in it. It's really starting to show in our report card. There is a wealth of information in the state report card system, we could spend hours, I will not do that. No one wants to hear that, but I'd be very happy to help anybody who would like to know more about that, who wants to dig in deeper, just contact me here, and I'd be glad to do that, so that our community can understand all of the different things that the report card tells us. If you recall, just a few years ago, the state moved from a letter system to stars. So a few years ago, we were As, Bs, Cs, Bs, that kind of went by the wayside, the state now uses a star system, 2, 3, 3 and 1/2, 4, you name it, all the way up to 5. So when we look at this, and we're looking at the stars, just remember, that's how the state of Ohio now rates school districts as far as their overall rating. So our overall rating was a 3 and 1/2. A 3-star district in Ohio is considered on standard, or meeting all of the state standards. We are above that, and that encompasses how all five of our buildings have done, and encompasses attendance, it encompasses testing, graduation. For the first time this year, it takes in the way that we work with students for career college, and workforce readiness, and military readiness, so a number of factors go in that. Our district above state standard. There are, if you looked across the state, 90% of the districts in the state were a 3-star or above, a state standard or above. So overall, districts across the state have been meeting or exceeding state standards at a very high level. To give you some contrast, there were 47 districts that were 5-stars.
47?
Yeah, 47, that were 5-stars. So between 3 and 5, the vast majority of districts are operating at right around that level. So exceptionally proud of our folks who do this every day, to be in at that 3 and 1/2 star level. It tells us that we're teaching on standard, we're reaching our students, and we're exceeding that. Now, the state breaks this down into a couple of components, I'm just going to briefly touch on those with you tonight. The first one is achievement, and that's the first part of the handout I have for you. Achievement basically comes down to what percentage of our students have passed state assessments. We give assessments from grade 3 all the way through high school, typically in language arts and math, there are 2. In social studies, they don't get that until high school, there are 3 in science, those come 5th grade, 8th grade, and then biology. The rest is all ELA, language arts and mathematics. When you look at our work, we were at a 3-star level, meaning we met standards with our achievement, and that takes in all of the tests that kids are taking, from 3rd graders all the way up to high school. In Ohio, roughly 35% of districts were 3-star districts, meaning they met state standards like we do, we did, or exceeding that. One of the things I wanted to show you, I put a graphic there, if you look at our achievement, one of the things that I always look for is what do our trends look like? What do we look like over 5, 10, 15 years? And if you look back over the past 5 years, our achievement level has increased year by year. So that's an indicator that we are operating with state standards, and we're reaching the. the kids the way that we're supposed to be. I predict with the amount of work that we're doing, that that trend will continue. We'll continue to see that increase in just our achievement, just how we're passing assessments. If you turn the, the page, one of the things I always look for is growth or progress. Little bit different than achievement. What, the, the biggest difference is, achievement's just what I, did I pass or not? Did I hit a certain number or exceed it? Progress really takes into account, did I get better from one year to the next? Even if I didn't pass this thing, did I improve? A, a solid indicator of really, really effective tier-one or all-student instruction is to see that progress move forward. We wanna see that continuing. That tells us we're taking kids where they are, we're moving them a full year. Now, that's a little different than, did I pass, 'cause we have kids who take a while to pass some of those assessments, but they grow year to year. We were a four-star district in progress, meaning we are not just moving kids one year. We are moving them, I don't wanna get too far into statistics, but one full step away from year. That's a significant amount of growth. Exceptionally proud. What that tells me is that our teachers and kids work really hard together. That's the best way to, to interpret that. When you look at a four-star district, we haven't been a four-star since I've been here. So you are, you are seeing the dividends of all of the work of the staff here, and all of the kids and families of the, of the kids that are here. Twenty-six percent of districts in Ohio were four stars. So the, the color coding down there, just to kind of explain it, anything that is green or dark blue means that they exceeded a year's growth. They've grown more than a year. So when I look, all of our grades, so if I just did a, just kind of a look at everyone across all grade levels, we're growing. We have a few spots that we still need to work on. We have very specific academic coaching and programs for that. Again, if I had to predict anything, I would expect to see our growth be closer to a five-star next year, because this trend will just continue. I can't speak enough of how proud I am of that. That can, and our, the achievement part that I told you about was a three-star, that comes with it. So progress usually goes first, achievement comes right behind it, because you have kids who are growing year to year. If you look at the number three, gap closing, one of the things that our report card tells us is, how are smaller groups of students, how are they growing in comparison to their peers, to the overall group of, of kids in the district? Once again, for the first time since I've been here, we're a four-star district. We are in the top echelon of the state as far as gap closing. So what that, if you had to break that down into just everyday terms, it means that every student here is receiving a top-shelf education. And that is from students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, minority students, minority groups of students, all of them are moving. That, just like progress, when those gaps close, achievement tends to follow right along with it, because we're, we're shrinking that space between kids and their, and their growth. So having a four-star, twenty-eight percent of the districts in Ohio puts us right again at the top of the state. We're, we're working our way up there. Lastly, graduation. We are at three stars, we're meeting state standards. I, I put a graphic on here for you to see. We were at about ninety-three percent last year. We are measured in two different groups of years, four years and five. Four years is kids who start, they graduate on time. Five years, kids that begin and maybe have a year delay. The state looks at both of those. So we are at, again, we're at state standard, three is that state standard. But one of the things I want you to notice is this, for our four-year band of graduation, we're above both the state level, and we're also above the twenty districts that are most like us in Ohio. It's sometimes hard to compare neighboring districts. They're, they're different, they have different makeups, they're, they're not exactly the same. So one of the things I will look at is, what do the districts that look like ours demographically? What did, how are they doing? How do we compare? And when we look at that, we are above the twenty districts that are most like us in all factors, which tells me that we are, again, doing what we need to do and what's best for students. The same holds true for our five-year graduation band. We're above the state average significantly, and we are above our twenty-like districts. If you ever wanna go over the, I won't do that tonight, the twenty-like districts, please let me know. Again, I'd be happy to talk through that. Last but not least, something that has not, again, not been achieved since I've been here, we have four buildings that were in that four range. They are the high school, junior high, and Pickwa Central. They've all were above, well above state standards. Spring Creek in Washington, right behind them. I don't wanna disparage them when you see only a three and a half. Those principals will come after me if I don't say, hey, they're right behind them. A few little things that go a little different, which I think they will, they'll be right up there with those buildings. So we are poised, if everything goes to plan, to have this, this growth in this report card just continue to grow. I think back to right after COVID, when we were looking at this going, I don't know what this is going to look like. We're not in that place at this point. We are, we have a lot of good things in place, we have great people in place, and you're starting to see it manifest itself in how our students are doing. So very thankful for the district, for having all of these resources, these wonderful people, and in the community for supporting that. You're, you see how it turns out. Again, any questions people have, reach out to me directly. We could do this for days and, and work through this data. I'd be happy to talk about it. Any questions here?
Just a big thank you.
Yeah, I just put the graphs together. The teachers and the kids do all the work, so.
You're, you're right, though, because our curriculum department is amazing. Scott and Kira are really on top of things, and they've got coaches where they need to be. Um, two, I, I would point out, two of our main focus points are the same things we've talked about last year. Our kindergarten readiness is really low. That means kids coming to us are just not ready for kindergarten, and last year was our lowest readiness score we've ever had at twenty-two percent. Twenty-two percent of our kids ready to be, be learners in kindergarten. That's really a low score, so they come in really behind, takes a while to get that really caught up. And some of the things we've implemented, as you remember, is the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. We're up to a hundred and fifty-six infant to five-year-olds, and we had several kids that completed it going into kindergarten this year, so we're seeing a little bit of that. We're initiating now with our preschools. Emily actually initiated this. She is going in and being the parent once a month, and they're reading books in the preschools in our schools to get kids started on the program, so we really got a lot of kids engaged in that program early on. Pickwa is one of thirty-three districts that got the grant this year that we've talked about, so that's a really strong focus on getting teachers trained. We really invested in the teacher training with our coaches, so getting them to learn how to help kids get caught up to their peers, which is hard, very difficult, very hard work. So a big kudos to, again, to him and Kira. But the other thing I wanna talk about is our chronic absenteeism. It's, it's at thirty-point-two percent. It is the highest chronic absenteeism in the county.
Right now?
Absolutely. This is from last year.
Oh.
The, the next district is at twenty percent, and it goes down to single digits. We have not been able to come back from COVID. Before COVID, our attendance rates were fantastic. Ever since COVID, they've, they've just been in the dumps. When you look at how we compared to our most liked schools, which I, Scott, think is the best comparison, last year we were the second highest in the top twenty, we're the, the fourth highest now, so we improved there, but we have a lot of work to do. And, and my plea is to our parents. We're doing a lot of things. Our buildings have goals, they're doing a lot of things to get kids to come to school. We have our own attendance focal point person in the district. A lot of improvement plans are happening, a lot of meetings with parents. We're still not getting kids to school, and, and my plea is, parents have to do that. If kids are coming in behind, and only about twenty-two percent are ready to be, to be learners, and they're behind, and they're not coming, we can't catch them up. We just can't do it. So, so parents have to step up. You know, when, when, when the community looks at our report card and wonders how we compare, that, that's a, a real effect that they can have, is getting their kids to school daily. That, that will make a huge impact. It will help us get that indicator, it will help us get our report card up where it needs to be, but more importantly, it'll get kids here. Ten percent, if they miss more than ten percent in the year, that, that's considered chronically absent. That's seventeen days in a year for us. If a kid misses seventeen days every year in their education, they will have missed a full year of instruction by the time they graduate, if they make it to graduation. And we have kids that double that. That means they're losing up to two full years of education, two full years in the process of going through. So I, I can't stress it enough, we're, we're gonna be doing some, some things here at the end of this first month, we're gonna be sending some letters out, congratulating people that have changed things around, because some buildings have done some really good work on that, and we're gonna be sending letters to parents where kids are almost already there, and we're gonna try to really boost that up. But that's my plea. You, you know, Jeremy's had his plea tonight to people, but mine is, parents, we, we have to get kids to school. You have to. That's the only way we can engage them, the only way we can lift the, the kids up and get them back on track and keep them on track and get those gains that Scott's talking about. When he says our teachers are working hard, they are, but they're working really hard when the kids don't come to school, because now you're trying to get work caught up as well as keep them on track with their peers, and they're already behind from their peers. So it's a really, you know, stretch and a hard climb up that hill. So that, that's, to me, is our hardest thing, is imp, getting the, the impression onto our parents on the importance of getting kids to come on a daily basis. We really need that.
How's that looking so far?
I, I asked Krista, our, our attendance officer, to get that to me at the end of the month, so Tuesday, she'll have reports for me by building, by grade, by, you know, everything. And that's when we'll start dissecting it, figuring out who's gonna get some letters. And again, I really wanna do some positive letters and congratulate parents. I wanna, I don't want it to be continually punitive. We wanna recognize those people that are getting their kids, so we want, we're gonna have that side, but the ones that are getting really close, those bubble kids, so to speak, we wanna really start right now by saying, come on, like, like, this is the first month, and you're already almost there of being chronically absent. We, we have got to change this right now. We, we can fix that number, but it's gonna have to be parent support. It, it just has to be, there's no way around it. So, but, um, great report. There is a lot to be proud of, and we did celebrate with staff. There's a lot of good things that are happening, and they should be very proud of, of that work. So thank you again, Scott, and to Kira, your colleague, and, and as well as our administrators. We've been, we, meeting Tony and I with setting the goals, we're getting all the goal conferences in for principals and their focus. They, they're, they're really good at finding what their building needs to do, and they've met with their teacher-based teams, and our district leadership team has met. Lots of good conversations have happened, and it's really coming together nicely, so the, the work will be targeted and focused. Other than that, just some other updates. Wanted to congratulate the Pickle Marching Band. They qualified for state finals in their first contest. They got a superior rating. They were first in their class, they were grand champion runner-ups, best overall visuals and best guard. They just came right out of the gates and just nailed it right away, so congratulations to them. Senior nights are happening with all of our fall sports programs, so I just wanna thank our senior athletes for all of their leadership, and the parents for being there to cheer them on all those years. It's, it's, it's always sad to see the seniors, you know, finish up their last moments, but it's also fun to watch, watch all that happen. So we wish them the best as they wrap up their seasons. This Friday is the Little Indian Cheer Night, and Dylan, you're a part of that. You wanna talk a little bit about what you guys are doing?
We are working with kids who are in grades kindergarten through sixth grade. They're able to register. We work with them Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week for an hour and a half. They learn four different cheers and dance, and then prior to the game on Friday, they will perform everything that they learn.
You said a hundred and forty kids?
Yeah, around a hundred and forty kids.
Wow, that's a lot.
That's a lot of kids. But that's our future cheerleaders, and you, did you do that when you were little?
I did.
Did you? Yeah, yeah. So that's pretty cool that you're doing it. Now you're teaching the next generation, so that's a great part of our culture. I love that. So thank you for sharing that. Homecoming event kicks off next week, the Homecoming Parade and the Pep Rally, which is a really popular event in our town, will be on October the second at six-thirty PM, and we do invite the whole public. We always have great attendance, so we look forward to that coming up. Homecoming football game will be that Friday against Fairborn, and then the Homecoming Court, which was announced earlier this week, will be recognized that night, so we're excited about having those kids experience that. The six alumni distinction honorees will be recognized that same evening prior to the game, and then on the field during the game. Just wanna thank everybody that nominated people, because we continue to get great nominations every year, and it's harder and harder for the committee to pick who those people are. But the whole idea of that was to honor our past, to inspire our future, so we wanna give the kids alumni people to look at, to say, I could do that, too, and really aspire to do some of these great things. So they'll get recognized, and Dylan, I understand you're helping us with that evening, too, so we appreciate that. We usually get the class officers, but they're all in the Homecoming Court, so me and Emily are like, who could we get to help? And we're like, we know somebody, that's, that's another leader in our district. So Dylan said absolutely, so she's gonna come in her cheerleading outfit and help us do the induction, which I think is fantastic, that a kid is there to help with that process. So, and you're all welcome to come to that, too, so. It's a fun night. Next week's College Week for our high school students, which is a really big deal, too, so we're kicking that off tomorrow with everybody wearing their college gear. We invite everybody to do that, to get started on that, so that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Duane. We're gonna move right into your agenda.
Okay. We have a number of donations, so I would like to recommend that you approve those. Some to Show Choir from different individuals in the name of Raymond Fuller, who passed away, and, and, and part of his request was that people donate to the Show Choir program because he enjoyed that so much. So several people did that in his name. The Veterans Association to our marching band. Coca-Cola Company is our district sponsorship, and they donated some money. The Maria Stein Country Fest donated to our football program because they participated in an activity there. Pickwa Arts Council donated money, Wyman County Park District. The PCS Class of Twenty-Five donated to our Student Success Program at the high school. Buffalo Wings and Rings to our alumni group, they're a great supporter of a lot of things we do. The CB Appraisal Review, which is a company, donated some more money to the Weiss Cup display we have at the high school to help finish off the payment of that. And then the Ohio Athletic Association for the Richmond Fund for Athletics. So several nominations, not nominations, but donations there. Just really appreciate all the support that those people give us, because that makes a lot of things happen for our students. We recommend board approval of the attached list of equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickwa City School District. The technology department, as you know, goes through all of that and picks apart everything they can and saves what they can. Probably they save more than what they should, they get rid of the stuff that they don't need, and that's what that list is. And then finally, recommend board approval of the attached list of library books from Washington Elementary for the disposal and removal from the inventory. Those books are just either outdated, or they've worn out, and kids just aren't checking them out anymore, so they go through each summer and weed out those books and get, get new, fresh books for the kids, and those are just the books that got weeded out. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for Duane? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda.
Amen.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, superintendent's agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Moving right into the personnel agenda with Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. It's a small agenda. You've got the update for the personnel agenda. Are there any questions from anything that's on here? The items five, six, and seven are additional duties for our drivers, and those, item five and six are new drivers, and actually one of them's testing today, probably still right[1762.07] now, and then we have another one testing tomorrow, Josh is testing tomorrow. So hopefully those two will be full-time active drivers after that. So outside of that, the good news is, the agenda's light. Any questions for me?
We got any bus drivers?
There's never enough, but yes, with the return of three people that were kind of held up, one because of surgery and two because of our Ohio Department of Education regulations that changed very quickly, we have them all back now, and then we hired three new drivers over the summer. These two will finish that up. That puts us back at two full-time drivers that are available to drive in the case of an emergency every single day. So we're in really good shape once we get these two finished.
I would just add to that, you should see them work, like, the first week of school's crazy because of they're learning new routes, they're teaching kids all the safety rules and places of safety, and kids are being added every day to their routes, so their routes are changing, and we're there quite a bit to see how things go, and every day they aspire to get better at their times, better at their times, while staying safety as the main point, but they just work together. I mean, they, you know, kid gets to the spot late and has missed it, and another bus driver's like, I'm there, I'm on it, and they just, they really gel. So just kudos to them and Regina and Donal for really pulling that together and making it through. The whole time, even if it's a minute late, parents are calling going, why isn't the bus here, what's happening? And they're answering the phone, they're talking to bus drivers, and Tony's over there quite a bit, and doing a lot of phone answering as well, and handling, you know, some people that are upset over things, and it just really, it's a lot, very fast, but they do a very good job at it. So just a real good, kudos to our transportation department, they're great, they really are.
All right, any questions, any more questions for Jeremy or for Tony? All right, I will take a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Jeremy, please call, roll.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Ms. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
All right, personnel agenda is approved. We have nothing for hearing of the public non-agenda items, and so we're jumping right into new business. Recommend board approval for the attached contract with M&amp;M Automotive for vehicle maintenance for the 2026 through 2028 school years.
Yes, so we've been in three-year agreements with M&amp;M. This will be our seventh year, no? Yes. I don't remember how many years, there's been quite a few. It all runs together when you're having fun. So this just updates the amount. We are fortunate that we have a good relationship with them. We're paying what I would say is the automotive rate for them and not their diesel rate, so they're giving us a good deal in that regard. And we've also taken some stuff on ourselves, so that we are doing it in-house as we can. So we have now, you might see a little white, I think it was that pizza place before the...
It was.
Yeah, so you might see that around by the buses, so we have a little light van basically that will have...
Works on the buses out there?
That will work on our buses, and we have a bus driver who is very handy at doing that kind of stuff, and so it will save us money from taking it in.
If it's something that obviously they can do.
Something we can do, yeah, just changing lights and things like that, super easy stuff that for a handy person to do, that you don't have to have a diesel mechanic to do, so. We're going to try that out and help to try to reduce the bill and help everybody out in that regard, so.
And from what I remember, we're very blessed to have Matt with M&amp;M Automotive taking care of all the buses.
Absolutely. Shane is, Shane's coming right in there and doing an excellent job. We don't know how long we'll have Matt, we hope he's around for a while, but on the other hand, he wants to retire at some point, and Shane is ready to step in and take care of him, so it's good.
All right. Any questions for Jeremy on this, or anyone on this? All right, I will take a motion to approve the attached contract with M&amp;M Automotive.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Jeremy, will you please call, roll?
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
All right.
We need to pick a different date in October.
Yeah, so our next board meeting is supposed to be October 23rd, but I believe we're going to see if everyone is available on the 16th.
The Thursday before.
The Thursday before.
On the 16th, you are, JoJo.
I'm not available the 9th.
16th works for you, Kelly, Sean?
Sean, okay, so let's go ahead and just make it the 16th.
Very good.
I'm sure Steve, Steve said he was available any other Thursday that month, didn't he?
Correct, yes, Steve is good then.
Okay.
We'll make the changes on the website as well as when the announcement of the agenda goes out, we'll make sure everybody's aware.
All right. Seeing no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.